We're going to call at 6:30 and call the meeting to order. If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, members of the Board have a recommendation for three amendments to the agenda. We'd like to add item four, which is discussion in consideration of a bus lease purchase for FY 1617. Add item number six, which should be authorization to submit a grant proposal for the 21st Century Act school program. And item seven for a brief budget update for the members of the Board.
I move that we amend the agenda by adding the following to J. New business as recommended by the superintendent. Discussion in consideration of bus lease purchase. Authorization to submit grant proposal and budget update.
I second that.
Any discussion?
All in favor.
Thank you. I NMD, approval of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the February 9th, 2016 Board meeting as presented.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor. Thank you. I N E, communications. Correspondents.
I believe you have them in your packet, but have one letter of resignation and also have two additional resignations for which I do not have a letter yet that I will take up in my report.
Okay. Well, this next section, we're going to...
Public participation?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. So this is the section where we have public participation. So anybody who would like to bring anything before the School Board, this is a chance to do that now. Please.
I understand you guys are writing our new policy for clothing regarding our kids. And is it has a lot of wording specifically for women?
By the podium, yes.
But you guys have a lot of wording about yoga pants, leggings and shoes, all which are directed to women and not men. So you're saying that my child's going to grow up here and she goes to school one day and her shirt is now, because she's grown, a little too short, she's going to be sent home. I want to know, what is the reasoning for this?
So, when we were going to, I know a lot of people here talk about the... Yeah, and I think Kelly and I said earlier, we should have this on every agenda. We've never had this kind of turnout for a Board meeting. We're very excited to share with us because it's wonderful. What you've read is an initial draft. It is a first read, we call it, is when a policy is put together with bits and pieces, usually taken from other places' policies or things that people may want to see in the policy. So the intent of this was to get a draft proposed and put it out to the students and parents and teachers and administrators to give ideas and feedback about the policy. This isn't a policy that we've set in place yet. This is the first time the Board has looked at the policy. So this is a time that we encourage and want the feedback. This isn't set in stone. This isn't carved out. There's going to be, you know, and we're going to take input from everybody who has input to give and take into consideration and make some changes. It'll come before the Board again as a first read because of the changes. And there's, there'll be a chance for, you know, feedback then too. But this is just a discussion phase right now. So we are excited that you're here to talk about it and we encourage the input. But this is what we're looking for, is feedback from you. So your concerns are sandals and yoga pants.
My concerns are sexual discrimination, actually. My concerns are that this is, this is very directed towards women. We have not addressed any of the male equal counterparts in clothing. And I'm sorry, but they all exist when it comes to yoga pants. What is the difference between athletic pants on a boy versus yoga pants on a woman? Fleece lined or not fleece lined? They're the same. We are not asking boys to cover themselves. But we are shaming women by telling them to cover themselves. And I am not comfortable with that. And I feel like if we do not, I don't, I don't think yoga, I don't think we need to name any particular clothing item, whether it be jeans or jeggings or leggings. We need to address sheer or not sheer. If something is see-through, it isn't appropriate. It would not matter if it was cheesecloth pants or if it was a sweater with too many holes that were too big. It would not matter. It would not matter the gender. It would not matter the article. The same thing with lengths. Having a standardized sizing for where your arms lay, it's not going to be appropriate because kids don't get to choose what the clothing manufacturers put out, which I know because I own a clothing store for kids and my sister owns one for adults. And I go against big box stores like Gymboree. And they, and Stacy Penny's, all of them, they purposely cut their clothing so that you have to keep buying. A child's waist size over the course of like three or four years only changes about an inch to an inch and a half. It's the length that makes you buy new ones. And this is particularly with jeans, jeans which are four times the price of a legging. You can't, I can't, I cannot put my daughter in jeans that she wore at the beginning of this year. I can put her in leggings though. She's going to be seven. I can put her in size toddler three leggings as capris. They still fit. If we try and take this option away, we are going to alienate a large percentage of our population because they cannot afford to keep buying those clothing. It's, it's not going to work. And it is a system that the manufacturers have, they've built this against you. When it comes to shorts, they are really on, against you. They, they put those out there with the widest size they can in that child's waist with the absolute shortest length possible. So come four months from now, your child's underwear will most likely be showing. And when it comes to teenage girls, they're worse. And these girls, they don't have a choice. They, they don't have tons of disposable income. They're limited to what they can find at that mall and possibly online. And guess what? It's not going to be this length that they make boys' clothes available in. It's either, we can, we can define this as something that is not overly exposing these children, but not giving hard lines. Because if we do, we are going to cost parents, first of all, an awful lot of money. And we had a hard time getting a school budget passed last year. We don't need to make them feel like, why do I need to pay more in my taxes when I've got to do all this? I didn't have to do this before, now I do. We need to think about those people. And we need to not make girls feel like they're going to come to school and be humiliated, possibly sent to the principal's office, be told to wear something ridiculous because, God forbid, they be distracting to a boy. But if we tell our girls that, we're telling them, get in line, get your graduation, go work for 70% less than your male counterparts because we've trained you to do that since you were a little kid. We've trained you to expect less out of society, for society to objectionalize you and to think of you less because his experience in school is more important than yours. We can't do that. And if we do not take that language out, I believe you will possibly leave yourselves open to possible lawsuits because a wrong person will get disciplined. Their parents will be very upset. And if we don't have clearly saying, well, we thought about the males and we thought about the females and we put it in there in equal amounts, they're going to, they're, we're going to get ourselves, we're going to be left with a lot of egg on our face. And we don't, we've come a long way. We withdrew, we've made our own rules, we've done all this. We can, we can do better than this first draft that has come out there and has really upset a lot of parents that I've spoken to and, and some of the young females in this room, but...
So that certainly obviously was not our intention, was to upset anybody. There was, I know when the policy was being crafted, there was some, you know, not everybody agreed on everything that was in the policy and they didn't come to a, you know, an agreement all the way around about the verbiage and the policy that was set forth. So this was our attempt to start discussions. This is our, and clearly it worked because we have a lot of folks here to talk about it. But it was never to offend. And it's fantastic feedback and I really sincerely appreciate you bringing it and talking about it. And I know there'll be others too, but we really appreciate you coming out to talk about it.
Thanks.
Before you go though, I'm sure there are other people who are going to speak. When people come up, would you please identify yourselves by name and then give your comment?
I'm Madegale Meller. Thank you.
Before anyone else comes up, go ahead if you would. Before anyone else comes up, it's important to know that the Policy Committee over the past year has spent a significant amount of time looking at drafts from other school districts across the state in crafting this first draft. So it's not just language, it's pulled out of a one-time discussion. It's been a lengthy discussion, so...
And can I add to that a little bit? Typically, a draft won't come to the full Board until the Policy Committee has come to a conclusion that this is the policy that we want to move forward. The Policy Committee has not gotten to that point. We haven't been able to agree on all of the language. So that's why it's coming to the full Board now before it's ready to move forward.
If I could further elaborate, the Policy Committee, we have a bunch of standing committees on the School Board. We're five members, Board members. And each standing committee is comprised of two members. So right now, the Policy Committee is myself and Kelly. Until, prior to Kelly joining the Board in November, it was myself and Andrea Perry who has left the Board. But we, so we're just two people out of five. And we typically meet with Superintendent as well as various administrators or depending on the policy we're working on, other people in our school department who have some important insight to help us, guide us in crafting that policy. So right now, it's Kelly and I are the two Policy Committee members. And we basically, as Dan explained, we got, we looked at a lot of different policies around the state and even around the country. We considered a lot of the issues. We've all talked to people in the community. There's some things to be said on both sides of the leggings question. And we want to be respectful of everyone's views and consider everyone's views and really do what's right for our students, so... But when we, as Kelly said, usually when we got a policy ready to bring to the whole Board, we pretty much agree on, you know, we think the Board, we recommend to the Board that they approve this policy as written. In this case, if that's not, that's not what we're doing. We're really looking for more input from the rest of our Board members. And we can invite them to a Policy Committee meeting because then it would be a quorum and we can't do that without making it a public meeting. So here's, this is the only format where we can do that. And we also wanted to hear from the public. So we're actually happy that this stirred up some interest. And thank you all for coming. And anyone else who wants to speak on this, we welcome your thoughts.
Thank you. I just, thank you Abby for getting up and speaking first. I just wanted to...
Fon, now.
Say your name.
Fon Harmon, yeah.
Harmon.
So I just want to just piggyback on a couple of things that Abby said and just add a few. Obviously, I agree with some of the language that I've seen used in other policies in other places can be shaming towards girls. And I, and I have a ton of respect for everybody on this Board and I am confident that things will go in the right direction. I have a daughter who has some really relatively minor sensory issues. It's nothing that really affects her everyday life with the exception of getting dressed on most days. And so for me, that's really like, we don't have another option. Finding the right leggings can be hard. And so I just wanted to kind of put it out there that there's a whole other, just without the male female part, without the, you know, kids should be able to choose what they want to wear, that there is a real issue there for a lot of families where, you know, the seam on a pair of pants or a pair of socks can be really problematic. And, and so I guess for me, that's, that's an important part for, for my family. I think also that we have, I mean, obviously here tonight, a lot of exceptional young students and student athletes who manage to accomplish a lot very well. And I, so I think that it's also important to recognize that these young people who can accomplish other things probably, for the most part, can manage to get themselves dressed in an appropriate way. And that ultimately, I feel like it's a family's responsibility to make sure that their kids leave the house fed and dressed every day. I know that doesn't always happen. And I think that I've heard some things in the past of ways things were handled with students, being asked to leave a game or being asked to leave school or change and have been really humiliated. So I just wanted to kind of like leave on that note that perhaps how we address those situations when they do arise is really important piece of that as well.
Thank you, Fon.
I'm Elisa Reynolds. Thankfully, I don't have any more girls at school, so I make my world a little bit easier. But my biggest concern is the kids who don't have the money. Flip flops are pretty cheap. They're like three bucks, maybe a little bit less. Leggings can be cheap also. So for those kids who are supporting themselves while still in high school, we need to consider, we're thankful that they're there first and foremost. I'm not really worried what they have on as long as their butts and chests are covered. I'm good. And I think the rest of us need to focus on that stuff. The flip side is, the girls will tell you, there's certain things that the boys wear that they love also. Our boys will tell us there's things that the girls wear that the boys love. So I think that we need to look closely at both sides of what they're all wearing and the distraction that can happen. By high school, they all should be mature enough to get through their day without being silly about someone's outfit. So my first concern is the kids who don't have the money to buy new things that we put into place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Casey Hardwick. And you're going to have to bear with me because I'm a little bit of a visual. So I brought some visuals to show you what your language currently proposal reads, what types of things are going to be a no-go for a lot of people. As far as the shoes go, a lot of girls are wearing things like this. This does not have a back. Having language that restricts any shoe to have a back would ban any of these from anyone's foot. And I don't feel that something like this is a safety issue on any child. They're easy on, easy off, perfect for the winter. These, I think my 17-year-old boy can perfectly be acceptable to put a pair of socks on with these and wear them to school. They're, you know, we're not in an environment where steel toes are regulated. So we shouldn't require them to wear something other than this, especially when it's 100 degrees outside or hot in the classroom. As far as other sandals go, you know, a girl, these, this is what's common for girls to wear with a dress of any sort. This does not have a back. This would be banned. You know, flip flops, 98 cents at Walmart. That's a pretty inexpensive way to put some attire on your children's feet. And that's a lot, what a lot of people can only afford. So I would strongly urge you to remove completely the sentence that has the full backing on a shoe. Because there are sneakers that don't have backs and those would be banned. And you can pay $80 for a pair of Bear Paws slippers and have them not be okay to wear to school. And I think that's crazy. As far as the leggings go and the yoga pants, I have a daughter and she has lots of other friends who wear those items. And what she said about the translucency of those clothes, I think, is the bigger issue. There are, I actually brought, if you, any of you want to take a look, because my daughter has several different kinds of yoga pants, several different types of leggings. Some of them actually veer more towards a nylon style than they do a pant style. So just the consistency of the fabric changes. And so I don't think we should put a broad spectrum of leggings. You have to wear a shirt that covers your rear end. Because quite frankly, if y'all went to the basketball tournaments, the majority of the females there were wearing leggings. Some of them had unacceptable short shirts on. Some of them had, you know, waist-length shirts, which is still presentable with the right pair of leggings. Others had longer shirts, but it's all a preference. And as long as they're not see-through, they shouldn't be a problem. I think that, that language, opaque, transparent, that should be part of it, not a length of a shirt requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
I have Jen Legassi. I've already emailed several of you. Sorry, Marcia, I forgot.
No, I got it.
Okay. I don't have enough copies for everyone, but I did send it to you. There's a dress code policy that I have found from a school that I'm slightly very fond of. It has very gender-neutral language in it that I think with the way our school has gone and is going and we have seen our students go. That includes, a student's dress must include a top, a bottom and a form of footwear. Genitalia, that's to be explained. Breasts and buttocks are to be covered at all times. So that's plain language. Underwear is not to be exposed. Bra straps are acceptable. As adults, females, we know that there are times when our bra straps show. Sometimes you just can't prevent it. Chests and midriffs are to be predominantly covered. Nabels must not show. Shirts must meet the belt line and have straps. The rest of it is pretty much what we already have in our dress code. What was really, what really got me passionate about our dress code is seeing the picture that I have sent to you. Marcia, did you get that?
That I didn't get, no.
Okay, I can send that to you. Is on our PBIS board that says, "You are respectful when you..." And it, students were able to use a dry erase marker and add comments. That has now been taken down. But a student wrote, "When commenting on someone's body, to be who they are, to be confident and comfortable. Middle school doesn't matter. Solution, cut off your arms and legs. That way, no one will see. I am so much more than my body."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to bring forward? Chris?
First of all, I'd like to salute the passion and the attendance on this issue. Chris, I'm sorry, Christopher Wally, living on L Street. I'm fortunate enough to have nothing but a boy with a year and a half left in Elster High School and you graduated. The passion is wonderful, that parents turn out and care. But I'm reminded of something I've read, I don't know how many times, and this is in inner-city schools, when, you know, gang bangers are wearing $80 or $150 sneakers and, you know, jeans around the knees and the whole rest of it. When they went to a simple unisex dress code, took that issue off the table. This school system shouldn't be about fashion. It shouldn't be about who can dress better than others. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be about, you know, is a bra strap permissible or is a guy's boxer's permissible? I don't think either are, as a father. But I'd encourage the Board to take this to another way and look at some uniform dress code called a uniform. You know, I'll confess, I'm a Catholic school graduate, okay? It was real easy, white shirt, red tie.
You were also in the Navy, weren't you?
Yes. Uniforms build teams. Uniforms build cohesion. These guys wear the same uniform and they win the state championship, okay? The best and brightest. And I'm sorry, but you know, when we sit here and say, everyone has their right to do that. No, they're students. The mission of this School Board in this district is to teach the children, not to try to accommodate every freedom of expression and dress style. I would encourage the Board to consider some uniform approach. Simple collared shirt, unisex khakis, inexpensive sneakers. You could do a whole outfit for 30 bucks. And if they can't, I would also encourage, and this takes me back to Boy Scouts, we had a policy in our troop and they still do. If any parent can't afford a full uniform, so a scout looks like a scout, that boy will have one, okay? And I've led an effort in the last five years to raise it with $60,000 for good cause. I'll champion an effort if the School Board needs it, to raise money for everyone to have a uniform-appropriate attire. Because you know what happens when they're all dressed uniformly? They're not looking at each other. They're looking at the teachers. They're learning. No one's showing off their $90 Nikes. No one's showing off their bra straps or their midriff shirts. Take that issue off the table. They're there to learn. I'm old school, I'm sorry. I haven't ticked anyone off today, so if I've ticked anyone off, then I'm done. I care too much about these kids and I see standards slipping. I see behavior slipping. And again, I'll point to the swim team and say, I've never seen a more professional, respectful, scholarly bunch of athletes than you're going to talk about in a few minutes here tonight. And I think we need to be promoting that kind of a standard. Uniformity isn't bad. Uniformity is a team, working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Hi, I'm Sydney Hamilton. And I just wanted to share a story that I have from sixth grade about my distracting shorts. Now, I will tell you, I am pretty tall for my age. I'm not exactly anymore, but in sixth grade, I probably was. But, so I've been tall my whole life and I wore a size three shorts. And they only make those so long. So my arms probably went down to here, my shorts were probably here. And I got called out for it by a teacher. And they told me to go to the office and I had to get a pair of pants that were a large, extra-large. I don't know if you've noticed, but I am clearly not an extra-large. So I wore a pair of swishy pants for the rest of the school day. And I remember this day explicitly, even though it happened probably three years ago, because we were taking a test in science that day and I was sitting there in my swishy pants and they were swishing the entire time that people were taking the test. So if you think that this is a distraction issue, I think the solution is more distracting than the shorts themselves. Because again, I was taking a test and everyone around me was just staring at me because my pants were swishing the whole time. And this was all because me being as tall as I am, I wore a pair of shorts, the only ones that fit me. And I will mind you that my rear end cheeks were not showing at all. So I didn't see the issue with it. And when I wore those pants, it just caused more of a distraction than I thought that it should have. And I thought that just because of who I am, how I was built, distracted everyone else's life. And it wasn't exactly my fault in the end, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sydney.
Is there anything else that someone would like to bring before the Board about the dress code policy or any other subject?
Max Grover. I'm an alumni, EHS person. I have a quick story as well. I know this is direct, this policy's been directed towards women mostly. But when I was in high school, I had this Hollister shirt and it had this little boy cartoon figure staring there doing this. And up top, it had girl legs. And obviously, he was staring at the front of a girl in a bikini. And I was told to swish the shirt because apparently it was too provocative. I didn't agree, so, but I did what I was told. I went, grabbed a very tight, small shirt that said, "Elsworth cheering." Principal was like, "Can you change that again?" I was like, "No. If you can't let me wear my shirt, I'm going to wear some that are open." So I think this issue's not only directed towards women, but as men too. But, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much for your inputs. We sincerely appreciate it. And we have a lot more information and ideas to take back to the drawing board with our, with our dress code policy. Thank you. All right, IMG, Administrative and Student Board Member Reports. Wyatt, you're up.
Good evening. I have the Student Council Report for the month of March. First thing, the council is currently working on a bake sale to be, coming up this weekend. We're not a hundred percent positive on the location. There was a couple issues, but we are planning on having a bake sale and a fundraiser for our upcoming dance at the high school to help cover the expenses. And that dance is our second annual highlighter dance at the high school. We're calling it Highlighter 2.0. We're trying to make it a little bigger and better, and that will take place March twenty-fifth from seven to ten p.m. in the EHS gym. And the theme is centered around highlighters and loud music, and really targeted, you know, towards high school students, I suppose. And we've invited students from, schools from all over, permitting that they have the proper form filled out from their administrators in schools and the behavior record and et cetera. And we're anticipating about three hundred students to come to the event. There's a Facebook page made, and that's about how many have, you know, replied that they are coming. Scholarships. We recently sent out our scholarships from last year. The Student Council gives out scholarships to alumni. We, two alumni received two-hundred-and-fifty dollars each, and we're working on fundraising for next year, as we're going to try and raise a little more money for next year. And finally, Relay for Life. As a council, we are proud to be taking part in Relay for Life again. We are still finalizing the details, but we plan on fundraising and doing other things to prepare for the event at the end of May.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wyatt.
Building Administrators Report. Dan, you're up.
Good evening, you have my report. First, I'd like to talk about, next Tuesday night is our eighth-grade open house. So, we have made our eighth-grade visits to all the, all the surrounding middle schools. And then, it's a week from tonight is our open house. The committee has worked very hard on revamping the entire program, and so you're all invited to that, and we look forward to, to a great night. If you, if you look at the broadcasting channel, so Channel Five for Ellsworth residents, you'll see something new that was up this weekend. And April Clifford and Josh Frost put that together. So, it has the Ellsworth High School Faison, and it has highlights of the winter season. So, check that out if you haven't already. We've gotten a lot of really good feedback. The last board report was in February, and so we were getting ready for all of the events that were happening over February vacation and further on than that, and we have a lot of those results. And I brought some people here to celebrate that with. Sometimes when you have PVC championships, Northern Maine championships, state championships, they don't really come along very often. And I thought it was really important to introduce to you some of them, so they get some recognition. And we'll continue this in March with the boys' basketball team. But the first two people I'd like to bring up is for girls' swimming, so Ellie Clark and Sidney Hamilton. So, we'll talk about Sidney first. So, she placed second in the fifty-yard freestyle in the PVC. And Ellie Clark placed first in the PVC fifty-yard freestyle. And she placed first in the PVC one-hundred-yard freestyle. And even better and more impressive is, they're both freshmen. So, you'll hear back from them for the next three years. Not to put pressure on you. But congratulations, girls. And could the boys' swim team please come on up? So, I'll have them do one at a time. Introduce themselves and what events that they participate in.
My name is Becca Marcosian. I swam the two-hundred freestyle and the one-hundred backstroke at the state event.
I'm Ben, and I swam the five-hundred free and the two-hundred free at the PVC.
I'm Austin Barron, and I swim the fifty and hundred-yard freestyle.
Sam Alvarado, I swim, I swam the two-hundred and five-hundred freestyle at PVCs and States.
I'm Cole Stevenson, I swim the fifty-yard and one-hundred-yard freestyle.
I'm Zach McGraw, I swim the fifty and one-hundred yard freestyle.
I'm Brian Wally, I swim the two-free and the five-free all year.
I'm Camden Holmes, and I swim the fifty and hundred freestyle.
I'm Cooper Holmes, and I swim the two-hundred IM and one-hundred backstroke at States.
I'm Hayden Sattler, and I swim the one-hundred breast and two IM at States.
So, Taylor Hamilton isn't here tonight. He's at the PVC Scholar-Athlete Awards, which are in Bangor tonight. But I, just some records that I want to point out is, first of all, a state record. Well, first of all, for the, a state championship, it's the first time ever in boy swimming.
Dana, can I add something to that?
Sure.
It's the first time in the history of Maine that a team won PVCs or States without a diver.
So, for state records, there is one, is the two-hundred medley relay, which is made up of Hamilton, Holmes, Matthews, and Holmes. So, that is a state record standing right now. School records, and there are many of them, so the two-hundred freestyle relay by Holmes, Barron, Holmes, and Hamilton. The four-hundred freestyle relay by Alvarado, Holmes, Holmes, and Hamilton. The fifty-yard freestyle by Taylor Hamilton. The hundred-yard freestyle by Taylor Hamilton. The one backstroke by Taylor Hamilton. The five-hundred freestyle by Sam Alvarado. And the two-hundred individual medley by Cooper Holmes. Those are all school records set this year. And we do have two state champions in wrestling, and Coach Burns is here to present them.
Good evening. I'm J.F. Burns, head coach of the wrestling team at Ellsworth. We had another wonderful season. We finished second in our region and third in the state of Maine, so we did very well. And I'd like to bring our two state champions up here, and I'm going to talk about them individually. Come on, you're allowed to come up, guys. Not only are they student athletes, but from a coach's point of view, it's very nice to say they're both returning next year. Trent Goodman was our one-sixty-pounder during the season. He, very kindly for us, moved up to one-hundred-and-eighty-two pounds for the PVC tournament and won that tournament two weight classes higher. He also won region and state championships at one-sixty, and he won in way to an exciting match, the All-State Championship, beating the Class A state champ by scoring a takedown with four seconds left in the match and getting a takedown in overtime to win the match. So, that was very nice. He is also the second Ellsworth wrestler as a junior to ever achieve a hundred career victories. Peyton Cole is our one-thirty-eight-pounder. He was a state champ and an All-State champion. He made it much easier on me. He pinned his Class A opponent in the finals at the All-States. They both represented us very well throughout the season and also at the New England tournament. So, we're just happy to have them both back again. They're both two-time state champions, and obviously going to increase, try and work on improving that even next year. So, thank you very much.
Can I, can I just add one thing? As a proud parent of one of the swim team members, I really want to thank the coaching staff for the outstanding job that they did in helping to foster the culture of sportsmanship that we saw in our team. And I also want to thank our athletic director, Josh Frost, who attended every home swim meet and was often seen at the end of the meet helping to remove bleachers from the pool deck back to the gymnasium. And he was a big help and moral support for our team as well. So, thank you.
Hi there, Jim Newitt at Ellsworth Middle School. In school news, we have a fair amount of testing coming up in the next few weeks. March twenty-first starts about three weeks of testing and reading, writing, and math, and that's the state testing that we do each year. We also finished our eye-ready testing a few weeks ago. Those results will be sent home with the report cards on March twenty-eighth. Every other month, I've been reporting parent contacts. We've kept up pretty well with that. And we had six-hundred-seventy-eight parent contacts in January. Put us at three-thousand-six-hundred-two for the year. That surpassed our goal of three-thousand that we set in September. So, we undershot what we are capable of. In February, we made another five-hundred-fifty-eight contacts, bringing our current total of four-thousand-one-hundred-sixty. We did have our annual National Geographic B. We narrowed the entire, you know, three-hundred-and-twenty kids down to the top ten, they play off. And the top ten then has a separate final set of questions. And sixth grader Noe Bermeister qualified for the state B by winning both our in-house B and then scoring well enough on the qualifying test to be among the top one-hundred. Fortunately, Noe's also a show choir member, and both the National Geographic B and the show choir finals are the same day. So, I think she'll choose show choir. In co-curricular news, in basketball, we still have intramurals going. They followed up after our season ended, so we have about eighteen kids in intramural basketball. Our boys were undefeated during the regular season and then fell in their championship game to Old Town. Our girls didn't have as many victories in the regular season, but did very well in the tournament, winning both of their games to take home that championship. Cheerleaders had a will of a weekend this past weekend. Our varsity won their division, and then they had the best overall score. I didn't want to do show and tell. So, we hang these from the, on the wall in the gym. So, there's, I think, three or four up there already, and we have another bunch to go up now. It talks about their, their highest score of the day, and that's out of everybody that attended. So, it's, it's kind of a nice adornment for our, for our walls, which is, which is pretty cool. JV also won their division. That's the first time, I believe, JV has won their division. So, and Pee-wee's, which really aren't part of the school per se, but they also won. So, it was a really nice day for Ellsworth cheering. Show choir and jazz band continued to do very, very well. They both qualified for their state competitions by virtue of their one rating at their district competition. So, the States for jazz band come up in Millinocket, excuse me, in Nacomas on March eighteenth, and show choir goes to Millinocket on April one. All of us get to see them, the, the whole school see those two groups perform a week from this Thursday on St. Patrick's Day. In apparent news, report cards will go home on March twenty-eighth. We'll send home those eye-ready test reports with report cards. And Dan mentioned open house. I'll also mention, registration for high school for our eighth graders takes place the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of this month. Parents are to call the school at EEEMS to set up an appointment with next year's guidance councils. Have a nice night.
Hi, everybody. First thing I'm going to talk about is kindergarten registration. We had fifty-four children register for the past, last week for two days, and we have an upcoming makeup day on April twenty-eighth. If you haven't brought your child to kindergarten registration, please plan to do so. On March second, we had Dr. Seuss Day in the K through four. It was a blast. I'd like to thank our specialists, Dave Nowood, Frances Kellogg, Jamie Reed, and Brandy Welch, because they planned the whole thing, and for the teachers for being involved. We had Jump for Heart. We do this every year with Dave Nowood. He works with the second, third, and fourth graders, and they jump to raise money for the American Heart Association, and it's the highest we've ever made, twenty-six-hundred dollars. So, that's pretty exciting. And the same time that was happening, we did a penny drive for loaves and fishes in kindergarten that went along with February in kindness, and they were able to raise two-hundred-and-twenty dollars in pennies. So, those are great things that we're teaching kids to sort of give back to their community. Maine College application is for third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. Bob Stewart came and spoke to all of those children classes about what they wanted to inspire to be. Tomorrow, just FYI, in K through four, it's readers are great leaders, and children are encouraged to dress in how they would like to, what they would like to be when they grow up, or dress professionally. And we're doing that to remind them to get their college essays in. They're due on Friday. We will be delivering them to Mr. Higgins at noon time and then going to Morton Moe for ice cream. So, you may not win a hundred dollars, but you can definitely get an ice cream cone. February reading challenge, after February vacation, we were hoping to get higher. We got six kids higher, and, you know, so that was encouraging. We'd really like to have more kids read, so we're hoping more will join us. And we had a wonderful, full-house first-grade concert, March, the end of February. Frances Kellogg and Brandy Welch did an art show. It was standing room only, it was beautiful. I'm sure Kelly, you enjoyed that very much. And our next one is March twenty-fourth for second grade. We'd also like to thank PTF. We had a Science Rocks Assembly for K through eight, and we appreciate all of their support. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bowles, Mrs. Sargent, both excuse this evening. I believe you have their reports.
Rachel, please. Good evening. In our curriculum coordinator world, we have had a lot of success developing our aligned set of standards. Our first draft of the Ellsworth School Department aligned curriculum has been completed. Representatives from all departments in the Ellsworth School Department have worked hard to align their standards to ensure that our students are assessed on skills at developmentally appropriate intervals and to ensure that students in each grade are receiving the same opportunities as their peers. Additionally, this set of standards represents teachers' discussions and work around the best way to deliver instruction, to provide multiple opportunities for students to access diverse resources and opportunities to learn and to demonstrate understanding. Teachers have worked very hard and had wonderful discussions about the best places to both teach and to assess the different standards and the pieces that we want to focus on at each level to build understanding all the way through the twelfth grade and to work into our graduation standards at the high school. The collaboration between the schools has been wonderful to be a part of, and has been very clear that teachers are dedicated, as we know, in the school district to, to giving such wonderful opportunities to our students. Those standards are currently being shared with our teachers for review. We had representatives from each grade level and department being a part of those discussions. And so, now they're all going out for all teachers to share and to discuss among their grade levels and departments. And once that's complete, we then have our Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Team, the CIA Team, which met last week to look at those content areas and the standards and develop benchmark essential skills in grades two, five, and eight. And these essential skills will be a culminating set of skills that should be acquired to ensure a smooth transition to the next grade span. The essential skills in physical education, art, and music are being developed by the teacher practitioners, not by an outside group. We want them to have their hands on what they are expert at, and they're working in collaborative groups. And all of these skills will be developed by the end of March. We then plan to share these standards in the skills list- Those pieces will all be in place so that teachers have time to be able to look at them and be able to collaborate on them to start the year with this new set of standards. It's very exciting. With the Atlas Curriculum Program, the, given the extensive standards work that the teachers have done this year, we are on track to roll out our new Atlas website for the community by August 1. This site will provide a tool by which parents, students, and community members will be able to view our course offerings, kindergarten through 12th grade, and see the standards that will be assessed in each course. The site will also provide links to other school resources, such as the district's mission and vision, standards mapping tools, resources that explain our educational philosophy, and links to international education platforms for use by students and families. So, that'll be something that people can go to the website and click on our curriculum tab and be able to see the Atlas Curriculum Site that shows all the standards that each of the grades will be hitting. As we get new families coming in, they can find out where their child has learned some of those pieces or is looking forward to learning some of those pieces and be able to see the pieces and where they fall together. So, it's very exciting. The summer and after-school program. This year, our collaboration with RSU 24 previously through the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant is ending as the grant expires. So, I attended a bidders conference in Augusta along with representatives of neighboring schools to learn about new collaboration possibilities and writing a new grant. The program's very competitive this year. There's less money available to all those who are applying, and so we're also looking into a shift in the after-school and summer program model so that we may either, whether we are able to get the grant, if not, then we would also be able to develop the program locally, and we're looking at different models. Mrs. Peterson, Roper, and I have looked at different ways that we could do that as well and have a strong after-school and summer program for our children. And we will discuss that a little bit later as well. And as we get new updates on those pieces, we will share them with you. Do you have any other questions?
I do. Sounds like so much great work is happening. When are the, when is this work happening? Are teachers being pulled out of the classroom, or is it happening on professional development days, PLC time? I'm just curious. I mean, there's a lot going on.
Our main goal was to have students miss being in the classroom as little as possible. And so, we limited the groups that were working on the standards development to only missing a half day if we needed to have them get release time, so they were not away from their students for very long. That was one of our main goals in developing this. Some of this work has been done during professional development days. For instance, the review of the standards will most likely happen within PLC time and Friday afternoons. So, we are piecing together the times that we can in order to develop the work so that students are most often in front of their teachers and that we are limiting the amount of time that they're away.
Thanks. I have another question. The 21st Century Grant, is that, does that include high school summer school, or is that just?
No. Right now, the current 21st Century Learning Grant that we are working with covers first grade through fifth grade. That's the Aspire program. Yep. And then we also have standards recovery work with teachers in the high school and the middle school as well, but those are separate funding sources.
Thanks. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, members of the audience viewing public, offering my report. First, I'd like to let you know that on March 17, next week, Department of Education will be sending representatives to meet at Ellsworth High School with the proficiency-based education teams, the district team, and a school-based team as a follow-up to the visit they did last May. And last May, they came and visited to talk to us about progress that we were making on our work. And it was also around the time that school districts, including Ellsworth, were granted an extension of the diploma requirement guidelines. The purpose of this visit is to commit and focus on one of five goals that we reported on last May, and this goal, the focus, is on implementing and monitoring consistent grading policies and practices across the grades 5 through 12 grade span. Our teachers and administrators have been working very hard over the course of the year. And those of you that have children in schools, no, we're not letting students fail anymore. If students are not meeting the standards on an assessment or part of an assessment, we're doing reteaching, refocus work with them, and having them take another version of the assessment. It works well for the most part, but there are times when you have students that have incompletes for grades for a long period of time, and that's one of the focuses and issues that we're struggling with right now. But that'll be a focus of that work next week, and we'll report back to you on it the next meeting. The evaluation steering committee that has been working, we haven't reported on them in quite some time, and that's because the pilot has been going on. The pilot for that evaluation work is going through the end of this month, but that group is scheduled to convene on this coming Friday. And the, excuse me, the agenda for that meeting would be a progress report on the ongoing evaluation pilot. And I would say, in general, it's going very, very well, including the software that we're piloting, a review of the February 11 student object, learning objective training session that was put on by the Department of Education. And my understanding from those who attended it is the work that our people have been doing on SLOs is very close to what the State Department is looking for, and that's a credit to the people that are doing the work. Not bad on the development of the PE PG Handbook, this Professional Valuation Performance Growth Handbook, that we have to submit to the Department of Ed after, of course, we get your blessing probably at the April or May meeting, and our initial review of the formal submission form that is due to the Department of Ed in June, and it's about a 70-page submission form. So, that pilot is going extremely well, and we're hoping to come back and give you a status report at the board meeting in April. Some legislative information, I think, is important for you and members of the viewing public to hear. The Education and Cultural Affairs Committee of the Maine Legislature is currently considering two major issues amongst many that they're considering that pending their outcome will have an impact on local school systems, hours included. One is a bill, and the bill number is LD 1627. The title is "An Act to Implement Certain Recommendations of the Maine Proficiency Education Council." As you all know, with our work on proficiency-based transition and proficiency-based diplomas, right now, the current law requires that in order to earn a diploma for the first class that goes through, students have to demonstrate proficiency in all eight content areas and in the guiding principles. The Education Committee has realized through its work with departments around the state that this is a gargantuan task, and they've put together a council to come up with some recommendations. As written, and again, this is as written, this bill would amend the current diploma requirements from requiring proficiency in all eight content areas in the guiding principles to requiring proficiency in ELA and math, to other content areas of student choice, and the guiding principles. But all content areas, whether they're selected by students or not, would be required to provide a pathway to proficiency. So, our administrative team is going to discuss the parameters of this bill tomorrow to see if we can develop a position on it. I think there is some potential for this, but one of the things that, at least from my perspective, that's important that we remember is we have coursework in all eight content areas. Even if, as written, is passed into law this way, we need to ensure that all of the programs that are being provided at Ellsworth High School continue to be provided and emphasized. But there was nearly five hours of testimony yesterday during the public hearing. So, there's a lot of, a lot of input to be put forth on this particular issue, and they have a work session scheduled for Thursday at 1:00 PM. And if anybody's interested, you can go to the Maine Legislature website and listen to them. They're streamed on the internet. The other issue, and this will pertain to the last item on the agenda tonight, was a budget update. The legislator, excuse me, the legislature is considering two proposals that would add funding to education in the state of Maine. One is a bill that would add $20 million. That's a standalone bill submitted by Senator Langley. And the other one is a bill that would add $23 million, which is tied to the tax conformity bill. Now, after I wrote this, I happened to look on the Bangor Daily News online edition and found out that there may be an agreement in concept with the second of those bills. Tax conformity may have been agreed to with $15 million being added to education. And if that is the case, that will reflect in our subsidy report the next time it comes out, so that will be positive news. But with a projected $72 million surplus, it's either going to be $15 million or probably something more than that. Two, some letters of resignation and retirement to share with you. I believe the letter from Andrew Henry was included in your packet, HCTC academics teacher. And we also have Neil Cole, science teacher at Ellsworth High School, who is resigning, and Charlie Mattis, high school English teacher, who will be resigning at the end of the year. And we have a new hire for the school department. Brendan Tenny has been hired as custodian at HCTC, and he's replacing Guy Rolfe, who transferred to a position at the high school, which was vacated when Josh Hendershot transferred to a position at the middle school that was vacated by Chuck Turnbull. I know I get that one wrong. In line with him, by the way, congratulations to all of the students who were recognized this evening. We'd like to add to that with recognizing a couple of Ellsworth High School graduates from the 90s. First of all, there's Dustin Seavy, who graduated from Ellsworth and went through the VPA program. I don't think it was called the VPA program at the time, but he certainly was involved in drama and show choir. He appeared most recently a couple, three weeks ago on NCIS and did an excellent job. And he is a relative, so I'm being a little bit biased, but he did do an excellent job. And just last night, Vivian Beer, graduating in the mid-90s, won Ellen DeGeneres Design Challenge. So, it speaks very well to a couple of graduates that went through our high school. So, misrecognize it.
Let's hear it for them.
And unless you have questions, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Committee reports. I don't think, other than policy, we have anything else to report on the committee reports, and we'll just hold policy till coupling. Old business, having no old business, we'll move to item J. New business, staff presentation.
What we had planned for the board this evening was to have a couple of students from Ellsworth High School come and do a presentation on their experiences as they transitioned to proficiency-based model. And speaking with Mr. Clifford this afternoon, we were not able to make that happen with a couple of students, so we're going to have to bring that to you at the April meeting. So, our apologies on that.
All right. So, the next item is the first read of dress code policy.
If I may, would suggest to the board to consider, the item is recommending a first read of the dress code policy. Procedurally, you can do that, and certainly you've got a great deal of feedback from the public tonight that the policy committee can take and consider. So, you can go forward with approving the first read and having those changes or anything considered for a second read, or, as you've done before, you can do a second first read. So, just procedurally, that's up to the board.
Personally, I would recommend we table it and take some input back and do another draft and bring it forward for another first read.
I agree.
So, we'll need a motion to do that.
So, I move that we table the first read of the dress code policy as recommended by the policy committee.
Well, we have an opportunity to speak as a board so we can get feedback from the other board members.
Procedurally, you need to have a second before you can have a discussion.
We're going to have a second.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. All right. So, Kelly, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. So, you want to?
Yes. I'd like feedback from the other board members. Just feel everyone out and see how other people are feeling about these items.
You can fit it in.
I think the board has a couple of options. Certainly, the next policy committee meeting is scheduled for, I believe it is April 4, first Monday of the month, where some of the feedback that was provided this evening can be considered. The options that you have are to take some time at your next workshop and have a conversation, or you could do it at your next board meeting. Again, your workshop right now is, has on at your board evaluation, superintendent evaluation, so that will take some time, but those will be your options.
Personally, I'd like to do a workshop. Okay. I agree. Okay. All right. Any other discussion on tabling the first read of the dress code policy? All right. All in favor? Thank you. Second read of policy JL, student wellness, nutrition, and food sales on school property.
There was, I found a line that needed to be tweaked.
Let's do a motion.
Okay. It's okay. It's all good.
I move that we approve the second read and adopt policy JL, student wellness, nutrition, and food sales on school property as recommended by the policy committee.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes. Okay. I discovered a line in the policy after the first read. I'm sorry. And I brought it up at policy council the other day. It's just a line that says, it's about competitive food sales, and it says that we'll allow competitive food sales at the middle level and the high school level, and that's not currently the practice. We currently only allow competitive food sales at the high school level. So, it just, it needs to be tweaked.
Okay. Right. So, never apologize for finding this stuff. That's why we do first and second reads. It's good. More eyes on it, the better. Okay? Any other comments?
I also had a, with the physical activity side of the policy, and we're requiring just a minimum of a 20-minute recess, which is, is middle school and elementary school, which I can understand the middle school, but I just feel with all the study and the research and everything that's going with physical activities and the benefits it has in many different areas that, with the scores and assessment and also just students' performance, just behavioral academically, it's, I just feel like even if it came through second, we can look at that more or, and I understand there's more information, I mean, more to, for, to get the 60 minutes and the classroom teachers, but I just think what the structure and the recess offers is very important. And I know it also talks about before school and after school, which would be geared more towards the middle school, I'm assuming, but it still isn't helping the elementary school. And I just don't know if there's some more we can add to that or up the minutes. I know, I know that we're limited with space. I know, limited with what you can fit in during a course. I'm aware of, and I understand that it's very difficult and maybe take some time or a committee or something more that has to look into it, but I just, I know that other school districts offer at least two recesses, and it's definitely going in that direction and more and more it's coming, addressing a lot of school issues, so.
And I can address, I can address that a little bit, to give some background. The policy committee has been working on this wellness policy for quite a while. We were actually poised, probably about, what, six months ago or so, to bring it forward to the board for approval, but we were waiting. We were told that we were going to get some additional guidance from the state that was, you know, imminently forthcoming, so we decided to hold off and wait for that, and then it never came, so we finally decided, oh, let's just do it. Because a lot of work went into this. The policy committee, which at the time was myself and Andrea Perry, worked in collaboration with a school department wellness committee, which was comprised of members of our leadership team, Ray Daly, our food service director, students from Ellsworth High School, some teachers, as well as some members from Healthy Acadia, who offered to come and help us with these things. And it was, it was a fairly large group and very talented group of people who put a lot of effort and work into this, and we had a lot of discussion about the recess requirements, the minimal recess requirement. It's not, none of us were really happy with saying 20 minutes a day. We all felt like there should be more. However, there's a lot of constrictions in the daily schedule, and it was, that piece, I would say, was a bit of a compromise. We needed to get something in there that would, that would address the minimum amount of exercise needed, but at the same time, we didn't want to put a minimum in that would be a difficult goal to reach. So, we certainly want more than 20 minutes a day, and we want to find ways to get that into the daily schedule of our students. But like I said, it was a compromise, and none of us were completely, none of us felt like that was adequate, but we kind of felt like we needed to go with this for now and then work towards finding ways going forward to bring more physical activity into the curriculum. So, I don't know if that satisfies you, but that's, that gives the background on how we got there.
I just think it's hard sometimes if that's what you're going to put them, there's just no guarantee, or there's no thing to show that it's not going to get put on the back burner or that. So, I just.
Yeah, I think there's a pretty vigorous, the people who were involved in this wellness committee, most of them still are, and we haven't forgotten it, the exercise, the physical activity thing. So, I agree, it shouldn't be left on the back burner, and we shouldn't forget it.
But you're working on it.
We're working on it, yeah.
Good.
So, if we do adopt this policy, it's not something that we would just, I think it's something we need to come back to, that part of it, and improve it.
So, I'm wondering, I'm thinking here, Paul. So, with the new laws, not
So if we do adopt this policy, it's not something that we would just, I think it's something we need to come back to, that part of it, and improve it.
So I'm wondering, I'm thinking here, Paul, so with the new laws, not only do we have to adopt and implement a wellness policy, but there also has to be a process for ensuring that the wellness policy is actually implemented. And there has to be a point person that is responsible for that, including keeping minutes of all the meetings and keeping documentation that what is in the policy is actually being implemented and followed through with. And I wonder, I wonder if we make it a goal to increase the number of minutes that we have for recess, if, you know, if that action plan, if we can develop an action plan to reach that goal. And if we do pass a policy that says only 20 minutes, are we going to actually make that a goal and develop an action plan? Do you see what I'm saying? I'm just wondering if maybe we should think a little more about that.
Well, I think we can certainly have a goal that is greater than 20 minutes. The problem that we were faced with, and the reason we made this compromise is because we felt like we, we had administrators telling us that there, maybe not every day or every week throughout the school year, but there are going to be times when we, that we would have a hard time on certain times of the year, certain days of the week, going beyond 20 minutes. But if we put, but we can get that 20 minutes in with the goal of exceeding it, but we couldn't do that every day. And so with, with all the other requirements that we had to, and all the other things we had to, we had to get done. So nobody felt like we should be, accept 20 minutes as our goal. 20 minutes is the minimum required, and with the preference that we exceed 20 minutes.
What if you, what if you found verbiage that describes that, instead of saying just a minimum of 20 hours, which sounds like, well, I've checked the box, I've done that. But if you sort of expounded on that and said, however, you know, the goal is, is this, and maybe a minimum of 20 hours, I mean 20 hours, minimum of 20 minutes a day and so many minutes a week, if it can't happen every day, maybe would also, by, in a week, be able to do more than 20 minutes a day overall at a minimum.
I wonder, you know, you talk about the provisions of this policy that are already in there, that there is a monitoring accountability and community engagement implementation plan that still needs to be developed. That may be the place to address the 20 minutes of activity. Because I, I think I remember that conversation, I think you had it with some of our administrators who are here.
Yep.
They're certainly not opposed to having more than 20 minutes. Sometimes the challenge is finding that while fitting in everything else that's required. But I wonder if the language in here, in page seven, which talks about implementation and monitoring, the record-keeping, and the progress reports, would be the mechanism by which that issue can be kept on the table in looking for creative ways to find more than 20 minutes.
Yeah.
I still might add a caveat in there, saying that that is the minimum, it's not the expected threshold.
I agree.
That means it's not, you know.
And I know that goes on to the 60 minutes and how teachers can incorporate it and integrate it, inter, integrate.
Integrate.
Into their curriculum and different. And I know that they're, with proficiency-based, and I know, and some teachers are really good at doing that, and there's a lot of teachers that are practicing it now, but not every teacher is practicing it. And if there is a way to report or how, I mean, I think there's a variety of ways to do things, and I don't like to say you have to have, and I mean, we were talking about this earlier in finance with curriculum as well, you don't ever want to pigeonhole yourself or say it has to be, because then you're losing the purpose in other ways too by when you are doing that, so. But I just think I'd feel more comfortable if it just was a little bit more, I don't know, accountability is the only word I can think of at this point, and not that you want to, I mean, that can create a lot of work as well, but just something, just to ensure that every child is getting that extra recess or that extra weather.
Movement.
You know, if there's just a little way to, I mean, suggesting it, saying it's happening, teachers should be doing it, but I don't feel like it's saying that it is happening, and I just don't. And I don't know if we, I know it said middle school and elementary, I don't know, I'm not as familiar as how we can break it up by grades and if that also happens within the school or within the policy. But I just, I mean, I think K through four is really, really important, and especially kindergarten through second grade. I mean, just from my experiences with both of my children, and I just have done extensive research on it, probably because of the way my children have that.
May I ask, are there, it seems to me that there are two primary issues. One is with the competitive food sales at the middle level, and one is with the physical activity. Are there other concerns with the policy as presented and gone through a first read? Or are those the two primary ones? If those, if those issues didn't exist, would you be ready to pass this and adopt this?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So my thoughts are this, procedurally, there are a couple of ways you can approach it. One way is to offer an amendment to the language that's in front of you. Okay? Then the amendment would need to be voted on, and then you'd vote on approving the policy as amended. Or you could withdraw the motion in the second, and you could refer it back to the wellness committee to further discuss those two particular issues.
I'm in favor of option B.
Me too.
Okay.
So in order for that to happen, that would mean that.
I will withdraw my.
Paul would have to withdraw his second.
I withdraw it.
Brendan would withdraw. Okay. And I think your, your action that you would want to take would be to refer this back to, again, the wellness committee or the policy committee? Because the policy committee is not the group that did the bulk of the work. The wellness committee did the bulk of the work on this.
Well, I think it would be to the policy committee if they need to, and they want to take the input from the wellness committee on board when constructing this, that would be great, but to them.
Yeah.
So you, we in motion.
Yeah, motion to refer it back to the policy committee.
I make a motion that we refer this back to the policy committee. Policy JL, student wellness, nutrition, and food sales on school property.
I second that.
Any discussion?
All in favor. Thank you.
All right. Discussion and consideration of bus lease purchase.
I believe you have the recommendation from Mr. Gray in front of you, and I know the facilities and transportation committee took that up. Do you want to address that, Marsha? Or would you like me to?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I just, I'm afraid I don't remember the details, like, and I didn't bring the report that we need to share, so.
As we talked about during a previous budget meeting, we're looking to purchase, lease purchase a new school bus this year. The primary reason is because one of our existing buses was deemed unusable because it did not pass inspection. We thoroughly investigated and found that to repair it and bring it back into working condition would be cost prohibitive. So we have approved, applied for, and been approved for a lease purchase of a bus from the state, and we have that documentation. And Mr. Gray has gone out to bid, and you should have in front of you in your packet three bids. He is recommending, has recommended to the facilities and transportation committee, the 2017 Thomas Freightliner for $88,900. Now, it is not the low bid by about $350. The reason is, is because that's the only one of the options that would provide an additional Fleet Shield under guard, factory-based, and the reason he is requesting that is because of the salt brine that's being used on the roads. So he recommended that to the facilities and transportation committee, and their motion in their meeting was to accept his recommendation and recommend that the board approve the purchase pending approval of the district budget.
So we need a motion.
I move that we approve the bus lease purchase as presented and recommended by the facilities and transportation committee.
I second it.
Any discussion?
All in favor. Thank you.
Ratification of negotiated agreement between the Ellsworth School Department and AFSCME Council 93 AFL-CIO for the Ellsworth School Department custodians.
I believe that was submitted to you in your packet, so you've had a chance to review it. You do have the option, if you want, to go into executive session if you have any questions that you'd like to ask.
Do you guys feel a need to go into executive session? Are you comfortable with?
I'm comfortable.
Okay. So we need a motion.
I move that.
No, it's tricky one.
I move that we ratify the negotiated agreement between the Ellsworth School Department and AFSCME Council 93 AFL-CIO for the Ellsworth School Department custodians.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
All in favor.
Excellent. Authorization to submit a grant proposal.
Just a quick background for you, and this will also segue into the budget update. And as you know, and Rachel mentioned earlier in her report, that the 21st Century Grant with RSU 24 at Ellsworth expires at the end of this year, and there is an opportunity to apply for a new one. We've been working with our administrators and with Hancock and Lemoine to determine the most advantageous way to apply. And as you heard Rachel talk about earlier, the most advantageous way for us to apply as the Ellsworth School Department is with Hancock as a continuing program, which would continue it in its current format. So what we're asking for this evening is for authorization from the board to submit that, and the due date for that is in a couple of weeks. I would also mention to you, as part of the budget process, we're not going to get an answer on this until the middle or late June.
Need a motion. I move that we authorize submission of the grant proposal for the 21st Century After-School Program.
I second that.
Any discussion?
All in favor.
Thank you. Budget update.
I have a document for you folks. I'll just let that get around to you. And this is just to update you on work on the budget that has occurred since your board workshop and since the most recent update that I provided to you on March 2nd, prior to my meeting with the city's finance committee. School Department Finance Committee has heard presentations from EEMS, Delta Education, Instructional Technology, Food Services, and just this evening, Curriculum and Assessment. They're scheduled to meet with Special Education and Ellsworth High School tomorrow, and we'll be scheduling meetings with Facilities, Transportation, and HCTC next week. So that, that will give that committee a full-fledged review of all proposals, which include everything from draft one, version one. The administrative leadership team has identified and prioritized, in addition to the $300,000 in reduced requests from the first round, about $440,000 in potential reduced expenditures. Okay? Again, those are not budget reductions, they're reduced expenditures of requests for increases. We have identified these items as part of the process to develop a responsible budget that adequately funds education. Some of the items may result, if implemented, in modifications to some staffing structures, perhaps, and some program delivery options, but they will not move the school department backwards. The reason they have not been formally reduced or implemented at this point in time is because we still have a number of variables left in the budget, predominantly on the revenue side. One is the funding levels for education that I talked about in my report, although that seems to be a little bit heading in a promising direction with the addition of dollars for state funds for education. We've talked about it again, anthem premiums. Again, we've projected a 10% increase, which is pretty standard for first parts of your school budget, to estimate that. We're expecting to get an answer on that the first week of April. Updated projections on tuition students. You know, you heard Mr. Clifford talk about the open house coming up. Certainly, that's an opportunity to showcase our school and what it has to offer for all you students out there who live in communities that send students to Ellsworth. I hope they're all listening. And the available fund balance, we've received our preliminary audit, we're waiting for the final version of the audit, and the fund balance is healthy, and Carolyn Heller and I, our business manager, are currently working on an update to our projected end-of-year balances for this year, so we'll have a better idea of what's available for fund balance. And certainly, the outcome of those four variables will determine how much of that $442,000 we're going to recommend to either keep in or take out of the budget. And again, I would just reemphasize that the overall goals in terms of our vision and mission, we also want to make sure that we have a budget that adequately funds what it is we want to do with our programs, but that's also responsible to our citizens. Had a very positive meeting with the city council's finance committee last Friday and provided them with an overview of the budget proposal as of that date. And I think I provided you with a copy of that as well. That particular draft had a 7% increase on the expenditure side, but I explained to them that there were a number of variables, and we talked about a number of other factors, which include the city's support of education, the fact that we are a department of the city, the fact that the city does view the school department and our school programs as an integral part of the growth of Ellsworth and economic growth in the city, and that we appreciate their support. And certainly, we left that meeting with positive feelings and an understanding that as the city continues to develop their budget proposal along with ours, that we continue discussions. In terms of a timeline, the timeline we're looking at is very similar to last year. We're looking to complete the processes through our finance committee and updates to you as a full board, either at meetings or at our workshops, to have a final proposal to bring to you either at the regularly scheduled April meeting, or, as I believe we did last year, have a special meeting a little bit later in April, to take it to the council sometime in the month of May, and to take it to a budget validation referendum on June 7th. And we're getting that date out there now, so that we can make sure that our public has an opportunity to come out and weigh in. The other piece that's not in my written report that I would remind you of, this is the third year of the budget validation referendum, and by state law, we have to ask a second question, which is whether or not the city voters want to continue with that extra step of the budget validation referendum. So that is an update. There will be some numerical changes for you over the next couple of weeks, and as we meet with the finance committee, I will make sure that updates get to the finance committee and to all of you, and you can count on an update at our next workshop. Any questions? Questions?
All right. Item K, calendar and announcements. Our meeting schedule, the policy committee meeting will be Monday, April 4th, at the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at 8:00 a.m. Finance Committee meeting is to be determined.
I can add to that, if you'd let me. The finance committee will meet tomorrow afternoon with Special Ed at 3:00, and Ellsworth High School at 3:30, and we'll be scheduling the final two meetings for the following week.
The school board workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, March 22nd, at the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at 6:00 p.m. Or 6:30. And the school board meeting, next school board meeting is Tuesday, April 12th, right here in the city hall, council chambers, at 6:30. We're up to adjournment.
I move that we adjourn the board meeting.
I second that.
Any discussion?
I just had a quick question first.
Sure, of course. Well timed, by the way.
Thanks. Speaking of calendars, when should we expect for our next year's school calendar to be ready?
Yeah, you can actually expect to see that at the April board meeting. What we are doing, and we have to work with all the sending schools in Hancock County for the vocational school. State law indicates that we have to have no more than five dissimilar days. In other words, no more than five days in which not all students from all sending schools are scheduled to attend. This coming Thursday, we're taking it up for the final time with the budget advisory, excuse me, the CTE Advisory Committee and the superintendents. We're pretty close. We have had it vetted here in the school department. We've asked our staff for input, got some great feedback, so we'll be ready to bring that to you in the April meeting.
Great, thanks. Any other discussion?
All in favor.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. 7:55.[1796.15]